Counselor Lee?
Here.
Chairman Perro.
Yeah. Is there any citizen input? None. The minutes, item number two on the agenda, the minutes of the December twentieth.
Motion to accept.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number three was a resolution requesting the administration along with Facilities Director and Maintenance provide information on the potential funding to provide electrical cabinets and handle electrical needs for the gates of the city. And I see that Tammy is here. Some of this work has been done. Tammy, if you'll come down and join us, I know some of the work has been done.
Counselor, do we, did you run off the open meeting law speech?
I didn't. Good point, thank you.
Thank you.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings and transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed knowledgeable and permissible. Tammy, I know that we wanted to put the electrical stuff down at the gates of the city. And if you want to fill us in on what's been completed there?
Okay, so we have completed everything. What was set up there initially was only good enough to take care of the gates, the lights on the arches, and it was just a basic 100 amp service. So what we've done is we've installed a 400 amp, three-phase, 120 over 208 volt service with a transformer on its pad. The main 400 amp service panel went to the back section of the park. First set up behind the main stage. We initially, we installed two 200 amp cam locks, which enables the sound company to just plug in directly into the connectors for power. They just flip the circuit breaker and they're good to go. Also, we dropped another 200 amp panel with a set of 200 amp cam locks near the road for stage number two, which also enables the sound company to just plug into connectors and flip a breaker. So with all that being said, we also had to work with National Grid to install a larger transformer, which is all set.
Thank you. Good job getting a lot of stuff done.
Yeah, we finished that last spring.
Now, I know that they're having their event there in June. There was room in seating that, is that something that you would supply them?
Between myself and John Perry and DCM, we'll work it out where we'll get that fixed up for you.
Well, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
My only question would be, everything was within budget, there was no need to go outside the budget for anything?
As far as I know, that was when Mr. Gallagher was still here.
Okay, thank you. I yield the floor.
Any other questions?
No.
Since it's been resolved, I'll entertain a motion leave to withdraw.
Second.
All, I'll make the motion.
Motion, yeah, second on that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Item number four is a discussion regarding the position of Tourism Director and Cultural Affairs. That has been in this committee, the council has asked for that since back in 2019. Every council has requested a Tourism Director, and that has still not happened. But I see that the city administrator, Mr. Atkins, is here. You could feel free to join us.
Thank you, Counselor.
Hello, sir. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon. Fill us in on what administration has planned for a Tourism Director.
At this time, the administration does not plan to hire a Tourism Director. However, that is not to say that the administration is against it. The administration, at this point, feels, having talked to Michael Sullivan at the South Coast Chamber, that we want to see what their plan is prior to making a decision about whether to move forward on a Tourism Director or whether to support some of the efforts that are happening through the Chamber in conjunction with View of Fall River and some of the other organizations. That is, I understand, sort of a vague answer. It's essentially wait and see. But at this point, the administration is actively in conversation with the Chamber, is advised that the first half of the plan should be published to the administration and to the public sometime in the next several weeks. And we think that'll give us a much better sense of if what they're doing is going to be in the best interest of Fall River specifically, or whether it's just going to be too regional to serve our purposes and basically trigger a conversation about moving forward with a Tourism Director.
And how much money will we be giving the Chamber and the individuals that do tourism there?
That hasn't been determined yet. So at this point, there's been no commitment made. And the reason for that is that if we understand that the plan that's going to be put in place doesn't really serve Fall River specifically and the priorities that this council and this administration have for the city, then I don't know that we're necessarily prepared to put any significant amount of money into that. I think we'd much rather go forward and do something that serves the best interest of the city. At this point, interests of the city. At this point, though, I don't think we know what their plan necessarily is, and we want to at least give them the opportunity to present something and see whether it benefits the city.
Counselor Lee?
I kind of think this is a mistake. We, does the administration, does the mayor, do they believe that there is a value here in having a director in place for tourism in the city? Do they value that position? Do they think that that's going to potentially open up what, right now, I would say is a lackluster, you know, tourism type of program right now?
I think that the mayor has valid questions about the value that a Tourism Director would bring to the city, not because he doesn't see value in the position in and of itself, but because I think he just has concerns over how successful that position has been in neighboring cities. We know that the, I believe it was the New Bedford Tourism Director recently left her position to go into the private sector. It doesn't necessarily mean that those positions don't work, I'm not saying that at all. But I think the question is, you know, it's sort of a cart and horse type situation. Is it better to allow some of the things that we're talking about in terms of development in the city, waterfront, 79, and some of the other things that are happening soon, to start to take shape, to understand the direction those are going in, and then put somebody in place to lead a coherent and collaborative effort into making sure that the public outside of Fall River knows about them? Or put somebody in place now who may or may not be the right person to lead that effort in the future?
Because I think every counselor, over the past several years, we've been talking about this, has had different opinions. So it hasn't been a uniform opinion from the council as to what and who this should belong to. I've held the position that I don't really necessarily think we need a director to do that, because sometimes when you have these positions, you know, it gets political, you know, and it becomes a different thing. But I do think that the mayor and the mayor's office is making a mistake in putting it in the hands of another group. If the mayor takes, runs for office and wins the position, he should have an idea before he even sits in his chair as to what he would like to do with tourism in Fall River, which has been, again, a problem. And it seems like, this is how it sounds, it seems like he's sitting back, waiting for the Chamber of Commerce to come up with something, and if they don't, then we're going to have something. We'd like to know, I think we'd like to know, what is going on if the Chamber of Commerce doesn't come through with something that's Fall River specific or that would benefit Fall River, you know, at the forefront?
Sure, that's a very fair question.
So what is, what would the administration's plan be? It does not have to be, in my opinion, a director, but what is the plan?
Sure. Very fair question.
And I'll yield the floor after.
And the only thing I would say is that it's not sitting back and letting somebody who is equally situated come forward with a plan. I think the feeling is that where the Chamber has done some research into this, has paid a consultant a significant amount of money to come up with a plan, there seems to be value in seeing what that plan yields. Do we know for a fact that that plan is going to be the best plan for Fall River? No. But at the very least, somebody, you know, we can all sort of anecdotally say, oh, we think it should be this, we think it should be that. But it seems that the Chamber has actually done some research and some work into this. It seems appropriate to find out what the results of that are. And if it turns out that the results of that are, you know, don't really bring us anywhere forward than where we are now, then we can certainly talk about how to move forward on our own. But at this point, I think the feeling is that let's see what they've done, let's see what the results of that are. There seem to be some very smart and decent people who are working on this, and we want to give them the benefit of the doubt for now. I can't speculate at this point as to what exactly the plan would be if it turns out that we don't feel like the specific interests of Fall River are supported enough by whatever the Chamber comes out with. But I think that the mayor believes it's at least worth understanding what their plan is.
You yield, Counselor?
Yeah, I did yield, yeah.
Counselor Reposa?
So I think in the interim, my question would be, what partnerships do we have with some of the good organizations that currently work within the city? Do we have some sort of partnership that helps them promote what is going on? Because there's a lot of good events going on. Like, I know View of Fall River does a lot of interesting and good events for the city. But do we in any way support them, help advertise for them to get that message out in lieu of having a Director of Tourism?
Sadly, we do not. And I don't, I'm not interested in placing, you know, blame on the website, right? Because we all sort of agree that the website is significantly and sorely lacking. And there was a recent conversation with this council, the whole council, regarding having awarded, finally, after significant research into a number of major development companies, having awarded a contract to go forward and build the new Fall River website. I don't think that is the magic pill, if you will, into solving all of Fall River's tourism challenges. But I do think a comprehensive identity that will have a single events calendar for the city and represent the city in an official way is sort of a starting point to then facilitate those partnerships. You can have all the partnerships you want, but if you have nowhere, if you have no sort of pipeline to then distribute the information, then what do you really do? And I think we all agree that you can, you know, for all the money that you might throw at a print campaign or a signage campaign or anything else, the biggest reach that you can have is online. It's going to be able to, you know, capture the most people, it's going to be able to be accessible by the most people. And so we do feel like, over the next several months, once this site comes together, that is going to give us a platform by which to publicize a lot of the really important and great events that are happening in the city. Now, very reasonable question that I think might come out of that, which is, again, cart and horse, chicken and egg, do you have a Tourism Director to facilitate development of the site? That's fair. And I think reasonable minds can disagree as to how to do that, whether do we want something in place and then a Tourism Director or somebody who's a Director of Communications or Director of Information, it can happen, I think, in a lot of different ways, could then step in to shape how that site grows and where that site goes. On the other hand, somebody could facilitate the entire development from start to finish. But I don't know that we're reinventing the wheel here. We already have a site. The information on the site isn't necessarily bad, it's just that the site itself doesn't really work. There's a lot of dead links, there's a bot that doesn't go anywhere. And so fixing those problems and updating, the information needs to be updated, using the information that is valuable and good already, and there is a good amount of it. And then assessing how somebody might then bring value to the site by allowing efforts around the city to sort of coalesce on a calendar, on events pages, on publicizing it through the site, at this point, I think that's where the mayor's thinking, that he wants to develop the site, get it to a point where it's workable because it's critically important and really can't be delayed any longer. And then by that point, we're also going to have a much clearer sense of where the Chamber is with regard to its plan, and we can decide whether or not it makes sense to go our own way or to support what they're doing.
So the community organizations that exist now, when they try to publicize events, is there a way they can contact the administration in which they can then send out something like social media, email blasts? We get some of them sometimes.
Sure.
But usually directly from those individuals. So is there a way or contact that an organization who's holding an event can send it to you guys, then share it to us, and then we can share it to everybody else in the city?
So I do know that our Director of Special Projects, Elena Pivide, is very well-connected with a lot of these organizations. She is really the only social media actor in city government. And I don't mean actor like playing a part, but person actually actively engaging with social media. And actually, we had a meeting at the end of last week about something as simple as using social media to put out road closures. And actually, I can report that we have, now have a system where the police are going to be sending me all of their scheduled details on the Friday for the next week. And we have a way in which those are now going to go out via social media on Facebook and through a dedicated Instagram feed, as well as to all the dispatchers to the bus companies. And I know this is a little bit off topic, but it's a good example as to how, one, new we are to social media, I know unbelievably to some people who live in social media, and how sort of that tool isn't being used in the way that it can be, and is only starting to be used in ways that will really benefit the residents. The road closure one is just one piece of that, and that'll probably start next week. So that's a step forward, but just not nearly as many steps as we should have already taken, given the maturity of social media and how people use it in their everyday lives. So I will say, in answer to your question, that right now, there is not an easy or consistent way for somebody to submit events for social media, Facebook. But there is a way, and it's, you know, those folks that know and are connected to Elena, and I think she does a really nice job with it. We're just dedicating ourselves to broadening that influence and making that approach more consistent.
I yield, thank you.
Counselor Lee?
Yeah, and I wanted to just throw in, and you kind of covered all the bases there, but I wanted to throw in that your website, and as you already kind of described, your website does not need to be dynamic or, you know, blow people away. It just needs to be informative and user-friendly, which it's kind of hard on both ends to say that it's meeting those criteria alone. It doesn't need to be complicated or dynamic, but I do think if you do want to become dynamic with online and then social media, Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook mainly, those are going to be your main, that's where I think you need to have that dynamic and widespread, because you can reach more people through those mediums than you are with just a simple Fall River website.
By far.
So, and at that, once you, and we're already kind of using that, where Facebook is being used to, you know, record these meetings for the most part now, and people have gone through those mediums and YouTube as well. So if you have, and it is, to me, this conversation is relevant to the tourism conversation because the purpose of tourism is to bring people in from the outside. And if we aren't doing those aspects to bring those people from the outside here, they're not, we're not doing our part. You know, they're not going to know what's here, they're not going to, they're not going to be informed, and they're going to probably look and see how the fact that we're not doing these things as one of those factors, say, maybe we'll get somewhere else to go, you know? So it's just, to me, this is the right, to me, that's the right direction to go. Focus on your social media aspect, make the website just informative and user-friendly. Does not have to be overly dynamic, you don't need to have Elon Musk, you know, run your Facebook page, you know what I mean? It doesn't have to be that crazy.
That would be a revelation.
It'd be interesting.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I yield, thank you for that.
Well, my colleagues have been very kind. I'm not going to be that kind, so I just want you to know upfront.
I'm ready.
We've been asking for this for years. Tourism brings in economic development, it brings people in. Right now, I can tell you that I have people calling me wanting to use the picnic area on specific dates. There's parameters, you've got to leave tables for the general public. Nobody knows who's using it on what day. The row company, the row center wants to do something there, they want to try to get vets involved in rowing, whatever, but there are other things going. A young man, Derpy graduate, made a film on addiction. I think it's like 33 minutes long, looking for a venue to show that film, and if he charged a $5 admission fee, it would go towards an addiction center. Who does he call? What does he do? He went to the school department to try to get something from there. I told him, try the school department. Where else could he go? What dates? What's available? What other parameters of any that he needs to follow? There's another gentleman that now is calling. TJ's Music teaches music to lots of kids in the city. Most recently, they went to Tennessee, and the children who could afford to go to Tennessee went. Those that couldn't afford were unable to go. He'd like to have something, maybe at the gates of the city, have music, culture, the arts to do that. Have somebody else who wants to do an art show. Can he do it on the side here of Sullivan Drive? I don't know. You know, we have people that want to decorate, and these are all volunteers, to decorate all of Lower Kennedy Park from Thanksgiving to New Year's Eve or to New Year's Day. Volunteers, getting people together. They're not looking to get money from the city, but they're looking to utilize the pavilion, have entertainment there on those weekends, maybe getting food trucks down there so the month of December, people would have somewhere to go. The Housing Authority used to do music at Kennedy Park for seniors. They did that on Wednesdays throughout the summer. It's all about the quality of life. I think that Frac and Viva Fall River, I think they're doing a great job. But for years, quite frankly, the Cannes Group, Dave and Dennis, Dave and Sandy Dennis have been doing it too. How do you think they're going to feel if all of a sudden this group has the lead over what they've been trying to put together and have been unable to do that? I wish that both groups would work together. I truly wish that, that that would happen, and a director would do that. You know, New Bedford's Tourism Director was there for 13 years, left for another tourism job at another community that paid her more money. The Tourism Director that was there now, that came on board, she had to work through COVID, found it a little bit difficult, et cetera. She got a really good job in the private sector. They still have assistants in that office. Their tourism office is still open, they're just looking for a director. But they have it staffed with people. You know, think about it. All of the hotels that we have around here, we have a hotel in Fall River, an airport road, very nice, I went to the grand opening, spectacular, clean, well-run. You have the whites of Westport, you have the new one that opened up in Somerset. When I go out of town and I stay at a restaurant, there's always a channel on TV that tells me the things that are happening in that city. Or, I mean, we could, you know, have a loop like that that plays. They're looking for things like that. And you could say, different things you could buy in Fall River, different restaurants. However, they do that. If they have to pay a certain fee to get on that, you'd have a list of different restaurants in the city. You'd have Matouk's Fine Linen, where you can go and buy the best quality linens and towels at wholesale prices compared to what you'd pay if you went to Nordstrom's and bought them. I mean, there's more things like that. Look at cable TV, you have BCC and you have Derpy. We have council meetings here, you have school committee meetings here. In the middle, when the school committee, especially when they're in executive session, it just says executive session. Why aren't we putting something on there? So that if I'm watching a school committee meeting and they go into executive session, now I can see all the events that are happening. Even if you, you know, New Bedford had a flyer. The flyer went out every single season. There was a flyer of all the events and all the activities happening. And it really bothers me, I've talked to the mayor about what I feel about a Tourism Director and the need, because it brings people to our city and they spend money when they're here. I mean, we've got people coming to watch the Vietnam Wall, and we've got rolling thunder individuals that live in other states. Usually, they would ride their bikes down to Washington. Now that we have the wall, they're all coming here. They've already booked rooms at the hotels here. They're not going to have a picnic lunch. I'm sure they're going to go out to eat in different places. That increases economic development. But I mean, they have this flyer all the time. Espirito Santo's Church has a feast, St. Stanislaus has a feast, St. Michael's has a feast. There's always something happening in the city. If you can't get a website to do it, at minimum, there should be a Facebook page called Fall River Events. And people don't have to even be able to post anything there, just one that people can put things on, have an administrator that just puts things on. You're sitting here saying, well, you know, we're going to look at this, it'll be a few weeks. We're in April. When are we going to start doing this? In June? July? I'm sorry. I would like you to really bring this back to the mayor and let him know my feelings.
I will.
I don't know about my colleagues, but my feelings are, to wait that many weeks, we need an answer now. Where do I direct these people to go? It's not fair. And everything else that happens in the city, put it on. So if I want to know, you know, it could be an events calendar. If I want to know on a Friday night, what's going on? Oh, this, you know, there's music over here at Troy City, the Narrow Center for the Arts is doing this, Lobos is going to be there, or whoever. So that you know. And then if there's other venues that come up and things that are happening, they know about it. I just think we, it's the quality of life. I go to every other community and I see things that are happening. And I know things are happening here, but we don't get them. You know, Holy Trinity does theirs, I mean, Father Rob does things at his church too. You know, and it's not just churches, it's the SCA Club. Every Friday night, they cook supper. Every week, it's different. It's reasonable. Is that something people would be interested in? You know, I just think that there's a lot, I really would say that I want to just table this, but I want to make sure that we have a meeting, you know, the third week of May, and find out what are we going to do. We need a plan, and I don't see that we have one. That's just my frustration, because I worked, work hard at trying to develop tourism. I go crazy. We're surrounded by water, but no one in Fall River can put their foot in that water. Does that make sense? Does it make sense to anybody? It makes no sense to me. I wanted to do the other side of Dave's Beach, I've been working on that since, oh my God, 1989? And it's always a challenge. And you got the people to do it, you've got Bulldog, you got everybody to do it. And if we're going to spend a little bit of money on it, so spend the money on it, give people something. You can't even park for crying out loud when you go to the Dave's Beach area. I don't know why they have that corner piece locked up. Water Department owns it, unlock it. I had a man call me, he went with his kayak. He was told he had to pay to park his car to bring in his kayak, but he didn't have a trailer on his car. You can only park there by wildlife and fisheries if you have a trailer. That's ridiculous. All you have to do, put the dock at the end of the picnic grounds. They were supposed to put a dock there, but then again, we have no harbor master. We're going to wait because, I don't know, the rules changed on that, I understand, that they have to have a police, I don't know, they have to have police training to be a harbor master. You know what I would say? Let's call our state delegation, put in a home rule petition that our harbor master doesn't have to be trained, have a police training, so that we can hire somebody that can do the job. And the other thing is, I don't know who would want to do it. Would you want to have your whole summer being the harbor master for $2,500? That's crazy. That's crazy. I mean, our poor harbor master had a boat, never put his feet in his own boat all summer. So, anyway, you hear my frustration.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Counselor Reposa, come to the rescue.
I'm just thinking about, you mentioned Elena. In the lieu of not having something currently, can we possibly coordinate with her to do some sort of like social media campaign? Because obviously, the summer's coming and things are going to get busy. Is there a way where we can put out there to the public, hey, if you have events you're doing this summer, send them to X, Y, and Z, and we're going to get them out there? You know, he doesn't, again, not having a website and all that, we can still utilize social media to put all that information out there. social media to put all that information out there. So, you know, I think what I'm hearing, and again, being new to this process, I see no tool to submit things to. But we have a good social media presence that we can utilize to then spread across the city. So would it be possible to do two things? One, run a social media campaign to get all those events that are happening over the next few months. And two, then utilize a social media platform that the city has to then get all those, that information out. Put up, post a calendar of events. Use the Facebook calendar option there. Post them all up. This way, people can see them, share them, and at least something in lieu of what you're trying to work on right now. Is that something that we can be done?
I can speak to Elena and other folks about that and see how feasible it is. I don't want to speak for her, because I don't necessarily know her schedule. And I also know that, that, you know, there, there are certain limitations to her job description. I don't want to, you know, make promises I can't keep. But, yeah, I can certainly talk to some folks about that. And I think there's a great deal of merit in that suggestion.
Thank you.
You yield. Counselor Lee?
Just to, just to kind of reiterate the point, I think all three of us here have mentioned that social media could be used today to try and at least bridge some gaps that the website's failing in, and overall that we're not, as a city, doing well in information consolidation and dissemination. So I really think that that's something that the mayor's office does need to jump on immediately, in my opinion. When it comes to this administration, specifically this mayor, I just simply don't believe, or I haven't seen yet, the vision as to what he sees when it comes to tourism. I don't think he's really jumped on this as well as he could have, or as well as he should have in this. And Counselor Pror pointed out, you know, a number of different things we could be doing. But I need to know what the mayor wants to do. I think that's what, that's what it really comes down to, is what is, what are they trying to do? What is, what is the actual vision, and what is the effort? The, sitting back and waiting for the chamber to come scare, I'll try not to use the term sitting back, but, you know, kind of waiting for the Chamber of Commerce to come down with something, or, to me, that's, it feels like it's passing the buck a little bit. And, and I know that some time has been invested in this in some way, somehow, but it still doesn't illustrate what the mayor actually wants to see when it comes to tourism in Fall River. And I think that's something that, that's, as long as that is what it is, we're going to struggle with this until we have an organized, formulated effort as to what we're going to do, an action plan, what we're going to do. But I do think, and as Counselors Repose and Pror, and also myself have said, you can utilize social media today. You can go now and at least disseminate and gather information in that, in that venue, and at least get us on some footing, some ground to start. So, again, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there?
Motion to table?
Table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If you could check your calendars before we leave, maybe May 18th or 19th?
We'll figure it out. I'm actually out of town during, let me just be sure. I believe 18th and 19th is when I'm out.
18th and 19th, you're away?
Let me be sure. I just, I don't want to talk out of school here.
Okay.
Oh, it's the week before. So I am here the 18th and 19th.
Is the 18th working for you gentlemen?
The 19th works better for me.
So the 18th at 4:00?
19th works better for me.
19th works better?
Yeah, and, and I can't do 4, get out of school around.
We'll do 4:30?
4:30 works better, yep.
Is that good with you?
Yes.
Okay. So it's good for both. Just, we'll do that after. But, all right, there was a motion to table of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number five is a resolution to refurbish or replace the Welcome to Fall River sign located at Route 24. I know that Diamond has offered to build the sign, to make the sign, and there's issues regarding DOT because it's on state property and it's a highway, and there was no intention of ever having children there. However, DOT then said, we have to pay for it. No, we need a new sign, and they're going to pay to put up a new sign. But how have you made out with that?
So, two pieces with regard to fabrication and then installation. With regard to fabrication, we have Sunrise Erectors, a Fall River metal fabrication erection company, coming in on Friday with a number of designs. So I think before, we understood that Diamond had been in conversation with, with you, Counselor Pror. I think the mayor had had a conversation with somebody else, and they made some designs. We're going to look at those, but obviously also talk to Diamond. But they, they do have, from what I understand, four or five really nice metal designs that comply with all the DOT regulations for weather and for, you know, durability and all the different things that need to be in place for something to be roadside and have durability over a long period of time. And they have done a number of projects around the city at no cost to the city, really have been great friends to the administration. And I believe they'll be in Friday to meet with the mayor, to show the designs and talk about a timeframe. With regard to DOT, we don't have an answer on that. There was, when you and I spoke about this, I think, last week, the week before, we made inquiries to DOT. As seems to always be the case, they send you to different folks. Oh, you got to talk to this person, talk to this person. But we should have an answer, hopefully, in the next week or so, with regard to what it would actually take to get them to actually put that sign in place. From what I understand, prior to a commitment to do that, we're going to need to show them what the design is, to actually show what the materials and the size and the weight and everything else would be. So I expect that we'll have that Friday. We'll have a sense of what it is we're actually going to build and put in place, and then be able to send it to DOT and actually get a commitment to them to install it, which is their responsibility anyway.
That's fine. I, you know, Diamond offered to make the sign, but if we can have somebody that's going to make the sign, that's fine. I will tell you that I have spoken to Rep. Fiola about this, and she has also touched base with DOT. So if there's an issue, there's a partner up there willing to help out with that.
I know the mayor did contact Representative Fiola after you and I spoke about it, so I know that she's in the loop, from what I understand.
Good. Any questions from anybody, or is there a motion to table this?
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything further, gentlemen?
Motion to dismiss.
No.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So.